I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. We're going to add 1A, which basically is the resolution that Barb handed out to us. And this basically is the resolution that we do not have to publish.
The entire ordinance.
The entire ordinance, just name and title.
In summary, brief summary.
In brief summary in the paper. So that's the only change I have. Is there any other changes or anything else needed to be added to the agenda? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. Number one, Ken, I assume you're going to take this? This would be, what, the second reading or the final reading?
Second and final reading of the zoning ordinance amendments relating to amendments for clinics, healthcare facilities, and assisted living facilities in the zoning ordinance. Probably skip through some of this. PowerPoint is exactly how we looked at the March 5th meeting, so I'll kind of skip ahead here a little bit. But as you know, we do have the moratorium that will get passed tonight. And actually, once it's published, would basically no longer exist. So that moratorium will run right until the date that it's published. So not having a gap in coverage there. But as we talked about in the March meeting, we had the planning commission held their final public hearing. I had their meeting in February. We didn't have any public comments, other than one letter from an attorney. And we had city attorney review those comments and found that they did not have merit. And what I wanted to focus on tonight was the questions that the city council raised at the meeting on March 5th. And specifically, those were three questions that I kind of pulled out of the discussion. Number one was really how veterinary clinics were defined, if they were defined differently than clinics, as we were talking about with this amendment. And the answer to that question is yes, veterinary clinics are defined differently in the ordinance. They have their own definition. Basically for animal care specifically. And those are actually only allowed by condition the use in B2 and B3 commercial districts. So different set of criteria for veterinary clinics, as I said before. Typically, they're associated with boarding facilities. And that is the reason that they're looked at as conditionally used, because you have noise and other situations of veterinary clinics. So they are separate. Second item was an item that got brought up, and it kind of ties with the third item. But there was a discussion on adding a condition, if we could, that a security guard would have to be on-site during these clinics that do, basically how we have defined as drug and alcohol treatment facilities, as regulated by Department of Health. And talking to Scott Briggs, he noted that specifically, we could add that right in our language, that we have the requirement that the security guard be on-site at all times when they're operating. That would not be a violation of the ADA laws. And you can look in the ordinance draft, under the two performance standards, based on page eight of the ordinance, add the final line under A in clinics for the language specifically, reading, a security guard must be on-site during all business hours. And then the same language is also added under the healthcare facility performance standards. Item, so part D, the same language. So that has been added. And the reason that came about was fear of if the Minnesota Department of Health rules had changes, which we were referencing by, or adopting by reference in the ordinance language. And again, talking about Scott Briggs about that, he actually noted, and I was not fully aware of how the league and the Attorney General had been interpreting this, but they interpreted that if we adopted by reference the Department of Health rules, that we would only be adopting the ones that were actually in effect on the day that we enact the ordinance, rather than just the rules in general as they change. So in the report, you can see a little bit more detail from Scott to that end. But in talking about that, it really seemed like the issue was more of the security guard provision got removed out of the rules from the Department of Health, if we would be caught basically short without that. So in our discussion with the city attorney, it really came down to, well, we're adding that security guard provision in performance standards, so it almost seems like a point not to stress about further. And basically suggests leaving the language as written, as we're referencing the Department of Health rules. If at some point we feel the rules have changed in some drastic fashion, we can go back and do an amendment to re-adopt the Department of Health rules. But the security guard issue seemed to be the top concern, and it could be taken out of the rules. And we've added that in our ordinance. So that was kind of the three big ones that I had noted from the discussion, unless you had anything additional at the meeting on the day.
Anyone have any other comments or recollection, or any questions for Ken?
So again, those were the big three that we wanted to address. So again, what we're looking at here tonight would be approving the ordinance amendments, the second reading, as was added as agenda item 1A specifically, rather than publishing the eight, actually, there's nine pages of ordinance. We hadn't thought about this until late on the day of Friday. But as was noted, handed out is the resolution that would authorize, if four out of the five of you vote to do so, to pass that resolution, would allow us to publish by title and summary, rather than the nine pages. And I spend all that money, but we also make it available on our website, and then hard copies if people want requests. So people can still read the full copy if they would like to. And we have a plan on publishing this for next Thursdays, New Prague Times. And again, the moratorium does remain in effect until the date that this becomes effective on the 29th. So we don't have any gap in coverage of the moratorium.
Okay.
I have a quick question. So, I mean, the reason I brought that up at the last meeting was, I was worried that the Minnesota Department of Health restrictions were more likely to be less and go down than, as opposed to being more restrictive. I don't know if that's necessarily true or not. That's speculation on my part, but my gut feeling is telling me that they'll always get, you know, less restrictive than more restrictive. But, so this is basically saying, I just want to make sure I have this right, that we could fall back on the league.
Basically, how the league defined it is, we are adopting the rules as they
Exist today.
Exist today, as we adopted.
Okay.
If for some reason
Not just on the guard, the security guard issue.
The whole set of rules.
Okay, so if they went through and, okay.
It's hard to, as Scott noted there, it's hard to really go back and track, like we had talked before, every single part of that set of rules. But that is in effect what we are adopting. Everything that may have an effect as of today, if you choose to do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that this council, or the future councils, have that ability to maintain the strict standard of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the new zoning amendment related to clinics, healthcare facilities, and assisted living, as per
Okay. I will second that. Mike, we need to do a roll call on this? Okay. So Councilman Ryan?
Aye.
Councilman Brusick?
Aye.
Councilperson Bass?
Aye.
Councilperson Jurk?
Aye.
Mayor Nikleai?
Aye.
It passes 5-0. Okay, then I guess I'll make a motion to pass the resolution 1A, which basically states that we will be posting this with, publication by title and summary.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it passes 5-0. Good. Good job. Thank the planning commission for us.
We'll do that.
Next, DNR grant.
All right, so as the council is aware, on the park board project list for the year, we had, and actually going back to last year for that matter, we had a project identified for adding permanent pickleball courts in the city. And I was really predicated on obtaining a DNR grant to pay for half the cost of the four permanent pickleball courts. In actually developing the grant application, and actually finally seeing the criteria that they were using for this year, myself, Bud Stief, and Jim Caligiuri, had met a few times to talk about how best to approach the location of the New Prague Area Pickleball Association representatives. And ultimately determined the location that should be focused on for the application would be the hockey rink area at Siding Escape Park. And there's a few reasons why this was arrived at. Pickleball can be a little noisy with the wooden paddles and synthetic paddles for that matter. Hitting the ball, which is a hard plastic ball, and being close to homes, that was kind of a concern that people had. They tend to play early in the morning before it heats up, and then also at night, when there's not the sun kind of beating down on you during the heat of the day. So we want to make sure we're a little further away from residential areas. And then obviously, there's lights at the hockey rink area here as well. That was not a huge component for the pickleball association, but kind of a nice added bonus of this location. Already have the lights there for hockey. But one of the bigger things that actually, two of the things that came into play with the grant criteria is, number one, we had to find a park that we did not have to do a bunch of ADA retrofitting on. The DNR grant criteria requires that even if you aren't touching other facilities in the park, everything needs to be brought up to ADA standards. Well, we don't have too many parks where we can go on, new enough to say that everything was up to ADA standard. But Siding Escape Park was developed initially back in 2006 with a DNR recreation grant, same grant we're looking for here, and means all the ADA criteria. So that was a bonus for looking at this particular location. Then the second criteria, which was really a bigger item than had been in the grant criteria before, was that we needed to take an existing recreational facility and improve upon it. So the idea behind using the hockey rink areas, right now it's kind of crushed rock, recycled concrete as the base, which provided a better flooding base than the grass that had been there initially when we installed the hockey rink. But it is not as good as a impermeable surface like concrete would be. So the idea was to look at the hockey rink area, to pave the entire hockey rink area, the boards would be removed, new subbase would be put in under the concrete, and then concrete with two layers of interlinking mesh rebar would actually be put in between the concrete. And we really wanted to make sure that the cracking and everything is prevented. We actually borrowed a set of standards from City of Carver that has done a similar thing. And it's held up very well for the past few years here. But anyway, the boards would be set back on top of the concrete pad, and they would not be removed. They would be up year-round. And the pickleball courts, actually, four of them, would be striped. And nets would be installed, and the nets would actually be on removable posts that would have caps that would go down when the winter and they flooded. But we needed to make sure they were on the north-south orientation. Hockey rink is on that north-south orientation. And while it does not use the entire hockey rink area, it does provide a good area to contain the pickleball balls from blowing all over the place while they're playing. And then also just generally keeps the degree of the court area. So the pickleball association was very much on board with this location as well. But obviously, going from paving about a 60-by-100-foot area for pickleball courts to a full hockey rink that is a much larger size, really did raise the project cost. So as you can see in the grant application, it ends up being about $140,000 project, with the city being required to provide a 50% match. This was brought in front of the park board at their meeting on March 13th to explain the increase. Park Board looked at their park equipment fund money that is available, and was dedicated out of the $45,000. And noting that even though it is a nearly $25,000 increase, that it was worth the available, or worth the money, and that we have available funds to basically grow and scope the project to provide the benefit for the hockey use, so we can flood earlier, ice your glass later into the year, and then get the year-round benefit of having the pickleball courts and/or inline skating and other things that could happen there at other times during the summer as well. It's kind of a good benefit for year-round use of that facility, where right now it's just winter, winter use basically exclusively. So again, the park board recommended approval of the grant application with that increase in funding. So park board, park equipment fund would have to match just under $70,000. There's a little over $80,000 in that fund right now, and we continue to increase that fund every year. We have building permits, revenue from new homes getting instructed that I pay into that fund. And that fund is to be used for new and expanded park equipment. So it's right in line with the purpose of that fund. So again, so park board and the staff does recommend approval of the grant application. And that is done and memorialized by the resolution that's come on the backside of the memo for authorizing or approving the DNR outdoor recreation grant application. Application is due at the end of March. They would notify cities that are funded during the summer. It could be a project, if we were awarded, that could happen in late 2018. But I think timing-wise, and just the cost of the project, we'd have to publicly bid. I think we're looking more likely at a 2019 spring or summer project, which is fine. We actually can wrap everything up by the year 2020. So I think we have a good shot. I did submit the draft grant application to the DNR staff for input. They thought it looked complete. And they said they can't really comment on how it might rank at this point, because they just don't know how many applications they will get in. But we have a good history with the DNR, with this park in particular. And I'm hopeful it would rank well.
Do they have these DNR grants every year?
They typically have them every year. There was a period of time where they did not have funding allotted to this program. I think that was shortly after, like you said, we got actually a grant in 2005 to develop the park kind of its entirety initially. And there were a few years when budget shortcuts kind of had that funding source go away. But generally speaking, they're there every year. But they can change the criteria a little bit. In this program, people ask, why would the DNR want to fund pickleball courts? And the idea is really just to get people outside and in a park setting, doing anything. Basically, is how they portray the purpose of it.
Do we have any pickleball courts outside right now?
What we have right now is some temporary striped courts at Heritage Park, right off of Lexington Avenue, in kind of the neighborhood by the waste truck treatment plant. It's actually over a basketball court. Pickleball Association has some portable nets that they have, and then community has that you can borrow. But it's not as convenient, I guess, for typical people to just go up and pick up and play. And then the other one, which they haven't used that much, is over at Foundry Hill Park, on the basketball court over there. One court is striped. Again, no net is there unless you know that they're going to play, or you pick up a net at community.
Have the tennis courts at North Side Park?
We looked at that. Those are kind of rough shape overall. And I think they need further work. And just being close to the homes, I think, Maggie, I think you heard firsthand, some people had played there. Not that it's horribly unwell, but you can hear it.
Yeah, you can hear it.
Okay.
The lines are apart for this location.
Oh, yeah. The fact that the existing hockey court is so much bigger, would the DNR, or anybody else for that matter, complain that we're getting too much concrete for the pickleball courts? What I was wondering is if they would say, well, we'll pay for the concrete for the pickleball courts, but New Prague has to pay for the rest of it. Have eyes on sight.
I think the kind of crux of our argument is that we're trying to improve the hockey rink as well. So in my mind, that I don't know if I would see them providing partial funding for it. I suppose they could choose to do that if they had too many projects. I just wanted to say, they will offer you X amount of money. But typically, they'll try to fund full projects.
The post that you put in for pickleball, for the nets, I assume, how far down is that? Do they go into the concrete? Do they go all the way through the concrete?
Right. So they go all the way down through the concrete, and there's kind of a sleeve that is in there. And then there's a plastic cap
Cap goes over it.
Seals that goes over that, so when they flood, it just goes right over the top.
Will that assist then with the thawing and getting the water out of there?
It should, actually. We can actually direct that a little better, where to go. And, you know, let's say we had ice-up conditions here in March. Basically, let that melt and then drain off, and be ready for pickleball, and fairly sure, more.
Okay. So that's then one of the reasons for the tiling underneath the
Correct. That helps just get the water. Basically, everything drains all through the stormwater pond there. And then generally, just the open field on the bottom, which is generally where it goes today. But it's probably a little better guidance for that. And then the whole park was actually designed to flow to that whole base.
Go that way. Would pickleball courts be able to be played inside of the existing New Prague activity? Community Center?
At the gym by the pool area, you're talking?
Not the gym by the pool, the New Prague Area Community Center, the hockey rink.
I don't know.
But just seeing that the hockey rinks, I assume, are pretty close to the same dimensions. And this way, if you could put it in the hockey arena, you could play it all summer long, even if it's pouring out there.
Yep. So there are courts at the renovated gym at the CEC next to the Aquatic Center as well. And that's where they actually play in the winter months.
Okay, okay.
I think there's six courts there, if I'm remembering right. It could be, I see there are four or six. But yeah, they've got brand-new courts that are in the straight there.
And I don't know how smooth that cement is underneath that hockey rink. Any other questions?
The lights are really the bonus, that in the summer, you'd be able to expand playable hours from what we have right now. If we relocated to this site, a lot of the lights year-round.
Are those lights on timers?
They are. They shut off at 11:00.
Okay.
And if you'd like to know what time they go on and go off, my wife can certainly tell you.
Nope.
To the minute.
Good job, Ken. Any other questions, comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution for the DNR grant.
So moved. Second.
I got a motion by Maggie Bass, second by Amy Jurk. If there is no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it passes 5-0. Next, consent agenda. I'll give you a couple minutes, if you guys want to read the supplemental, or the minutes from the special meeting that we had last week that were here. Looks like the chamber did all their work over, they must have got everything passed for all their programs and everything, for the half marathon, to Dojinki, to the check-me-out park field. So anyone waiting around this year? I guess we'll open the floor up if anyone has any questions on anything in the consent agenda.
I just have clarification on Dojinki. I know last year, we extended it till midnight.
Full compliance, it went well, no complaints.
Right. So it looks like that's in their letter here?
Same request as last year.
On the letters, it may be just the ordinance is going to assist the 130. On the last notice, I just wanted to clarify that it is midnight.
That part is the suspension of the city ordinance on the consumption of alcohol.
All right, so he's just quoting the whole ordinance there.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. That's all I just wanted to clarify.
No, your event is that midnight on Saturday, so that did not change.
Just doesn't mean that you'd get
All those people that want to sit down at the table.
Yes. Any other questions on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it passes 5-0. Viscillaneous. Patrick? Nothing?
Bill, early, but happy birthday, it's free.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yes, that's tomorrow. And they're talking snow. Right, Mitch?
Yep.
You have any comments? Got anything?
Not today.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for coming back. We missed you in the last meeting. Ken?
Nothing more.
Michael?
We're scheduled, everybody except David, is scheduled to leave on Thursday for the legislative conference. I'd recommend that we leave about quarter to seven from the cross-site of City Hall. I don't have a vehicle like I'm shot, unless you got my message. Whether you're out there already?
Be there well afterwards, I believe.
Okay, so you want to ride separate?
Yeah.
Then I can ride, we've got it covered, however it wants.
Okay. Yeah, I could ride with Sean there and come back with you. Do you want to do that, Sean?
Yeah. And what we have is scheduled to go through noon in the lunch hour, and then head over to visit with Representative Vogel at 1:30. As you recall, I had troubles trying to get scheduled with our Senator due to the fact that he's in committee from 1:00 to 2:30. The word I have is that we can head over there, but it's likely that we will not be able to pull him out of committee, that that's the final date of Bill Mark up in the first cutting of bills as far as getting it through the process. The league did not know that when they scheduled this, that they tried to anticipate that schedule, but they never know finally or exactly what that date is. So in rechecking with his office, I was told that we could meet with him at the conclusion of committee ever about 2:30 there, and talk with him, and then leave from there, or go over to his office. The question is, is do you want to, if we get in with Representative Vogel at 1:30, which will be in the State Office Building, we need to go over to the Capitol, because he'll be in room 15, right below the rotunda. So we have to walk and leave to go over there. So we would be close to, at that time, getting there, when he's likely to shortly be getting out of committee, if you want to do that. I can get that firmed up tomorrow and talk to his legislative assistant.
Yeah, I think we should schedule it. Be good, guys.
I tried to have it a little tighter than that, but wasn't able to get him out of there at about 2:00 and so I sent a second email and so he came back with, well, we could meet at the end of committee, which would be about 2:30.
Okay.
And so we'll be, we'll park in, you can park at the league, parking lot Sean there on University and it's one block to the east is where the church is.
I've gone to it before, so yeah, same place.
So, yes, we go about quarter to 7:00, not knowing exactly what traffic might be that registration starts at 8:00, program is thirty, so maybe it's time to walk out the street.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else, Mike?
Oh, the work, Ken, I should have had Ken mention under his, is that we have the gentleman in, we were early, I don't want to steal your thunder, go ahead.
Oh, the skate park you're talking about? Yeah, skate park mini-pipe was installed last week, much earlier than we anticipated. We actually had to move snow on the, on the pad to get that going, but they were able to get us in and get it done and it's skatable if people want to go there. So, we've put out our little article in the newsletter and yeah, I'm not going to try it, but.
Well, Maggie, that's too small for her, obviously.
Exactly, yeah.
The pictures I saw, you know.
It was barely finished on Friday and I can assure you that the skaters have found it and they are using it.
Well, I'm sure Maggie was out there first thing Saturday morning. Good. Anything else, Mike? Sean?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barb, do you have anything? I didn't mean to pass you over. Sean, you still know?
I'm still know.
Dave?
Yeah, two things. One, I was going by there, the mini-pipes on Saturday afternoon and there was one fellow out there that was doing some last-minute work on the half-pipe and he brought his skateboard along with him. So, about 5:00, 5:30, he was out there going down the mini-pipe at the same time the kids were, there were kids on, I don't know what they call those things, they're like, scooters, yeah. Yeah, they were going up and down those things. I saw them coming down and going up the hill by the elementary school and couldn't wait to get down that half-pipe. So, as soon as that was done, those kids were up there playing, having a good time. A lot of people there.
Yeah, the guy that did the install is a professional skateboarder.
Is he?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, he has a skateboard out there.
Yep.
The other thing that I want to bring up is I think I overreacted. I wasn't feeling good and got a little irritated, but on the age, increasing the age of 21 for tobacco use, I overreacted a little bit and I don't want to drop that thing completely. I'd like to still bring it up before the council at some point in time.
It looks like St. Peter's.
St. Peter, I talked to someone at St. Peter this afternoon and I think her name is Barbara. She says, yeah, they were going to wait until Mankato and North Mankato brought theirs first, pass theirs, then they, St. Peter would pass theirs. Well, it's bringing up again at, I think their next meeting to see whether or not they're going to pass it at all, but they weren't going to wait anymore for Mankato and North Mankato, they decided. So, it's still in the works, but they don't know yet whether it's going to pass. I am in the process of contacting all the dentists in town and most of the physicians in town to see what kind of thoughts they have on it. So, when I hear back from them, I'll talk further about it here.
Sounds fair.
That's it.
Okay. Maggie, anything?
Just one item. I want to point out that I think it was a number of months ago that the park board decided to change their time of their meetings from 6:30 until 6:00. So, I know that Dave, you got caught off-guard when you came to visit us in our last meeting. So, I just want to make that correction on our materials and on our website.
Good. So, it said 6:00?
It said 6:00, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Amy?
No.
I don't have anything. I do want to talk to Vogel and Senator Graham and see what their position is on the age 21 too for tobacco thing. That would be something to, I don't know if there's anything in any bills moving through right now, but.
Word I has heard was that it won't go this year. So, that's all I, that's just their hand.
Sounds good. I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? We're out of here, everyone. Thank you very much.